Welcome everyone to the Pittsburgh Planning Board meeting September 19th, 2023. Apologize for delay. We had some technical difficulties to overcome. I believe for those who registered, a new book was sent out. First item on our agenda this evening, required plans. We do not have any of those proposed this evening. Do you have one minor site plan? Stephen Sene at 69 Colley Street.
Thank you. Just wanted to request to withdraw the application and resubmit at a later date.
So there's a motion of the applicant would like?
Motion to approve withdrawal request.
Second? There's a second. And I'll say, all those in favor say aye, all those opposed say oppose. And we'll take roll call. And Alex?
Aye.
Alin?
Aye.
Amanda?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Paula?
Aye.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, guys. I did send an email also.
Great. Thank you very much. Underneath the public hearing segment this evening, we have a special permit and site plan review for soil energy development at 140 Hart House Road. That's on Pittsburgh High School. The installation of three solar canopies for a portion of the parking areas. That was continued from our August 29th meeting. We have since received a written request to extend to our approval meeting. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
That's agreeable for the board to continue? Yes. To our October meeting? Are you going to make a motion?
Motion to continue 140 Hart House Road to October 24th.
Second, then motion?
Motion's been made with the second. And I'll say, all those in favor say? All of us in favor say aye. Yeah. My goodness, COVID, Elon COVID is kicking in. Right, all those in favor say approve. I say aye, and then all those opposed say oppose. Alin, Alex?
Aye.
Alin?
Aye.
Amanda?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Paula?
Aye.
Count myself too. Well, the lights dim and like back and forth with like not having like? Readers, not readers. Just hit another milestone. It's great. We do have our other, next item is major site plan review fuller for 44 Ronald Street, which is conversion of residential dwelling into daycare center, continued from our August 29th. The applicant did sign an extension to our October meeting.
Correct.
Previously, so I guess motions on the board whether to, well, they already signed the extension to October. So it was here at the July meeting, signed the extension. They could just make a motion for the board to then continue it, also agree to continue it to.
Motion to continue?
Motion to continue.
Second?
In a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed say a po. And I'll take roll call. Alex?
Aye.
Alin?
Aye.
Amanda?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Paula?
Aye.
And again, we got, we did not receive any new information. The next item, actually before we even, we do that one, we've got a special permit and site plan review, PUD development for eight units located at 122 Old Wilson Road. That one, we also did receive a request.
Correct.
To continue.
To continue.
To October.
Well, I didn't give them the answer to October, so.
Do we know the reason why they're asking for the continuance?
They're, they are sorting out the DPW comments that they received back just recently, this past week. So I guess they're revising their plans.
I guess it's going to be one way now that October is going to be a heavy month with new and continued items. It's like we want to continue it to November, but there's probably going to be a lot of potential items on our October. We also continue in November, so I'm not sure what season is.
Motion to continue to November meeting?
Well, specifically requested for October.
I think how I said the next thing.
Can we fit it in October?
That's where I think it'll be, it's a heavy agenda, but November's not going to be in potentially.
I'll revise that motion to continue to October.
A motion's been made with the second to continue our October meeting. All those in favor say aye, all those opposed say oppose. And roll call, Alex?
Aye.
Alin?
Aye.
Amanda?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Paula?
Aye.
That's three continued items. And now we have before us our site plan review of 270 Westminster Street for Monty Tech Satellite Campus. And is this, is this continued from our last meeting or was that other business from our last?
I think it was continued. I just forgot to put it down.
Okay. Continued from our August meeting here on, so you.
How would you guys take seat?
Okay.
Yeah, first, what I want to do is I want to thank the board that let us come forward. As we were here back in September on the second, I believe it was, no, August 29th. And when we came before you and we presented, as Mr. Fontaine pointed out, the turnaround time was very quick for us to get us, get the documentation to you and everything else. And we didn't quite make that, but so we appreciate the fact that you still allowing us to come before the board and give you an update because the feedback that you gave us, we took to heart. It immediately got to work on addressing some of that information. So to give you a quick update, and then once again, I'll turn it over to, and this is Floyd Morrison, who's our house carpentry instructor, will be the project manager. Randy Myron is our engineer from Boulder. Mr. Kerry D. Whitaker is our grant writer. He's our vocational director. And I'm Tom Brown, the superintendent. But to give you a quick update, so that night immediately after the meeting, we started talking about what we needed to do. One of the first things, if you recall, one of the major issues was the question of easement that happens between 291 Westminster Street and 270 Westminster Street, which is the building that we are going to be leasing. We immediately got a copy of these with that night. We had not seen a copy of the easement. We were able to download it from the registered deeds. We found out that the easement was actually, hadn't been filed until a week before we took over the building. So we found that out. So in then reading, in reading the deed, we didn't see what was made clear by the folks on the board. I remember Mr. Kerry in particular pointing out that the easement even points out that there's something in the easement that a local, one of the local committees or audit says that violates ordinance. The easement may not necessarily be remaining in place. So we've done some work on that. And again, I'll be turning it over to Randy to talk a little bit about that. But what the most importantly is, one of the big recommendations was for us to meet with folks from the fire department, police department, and DPW. And so we scheduled a meeting and we met on September 6th. Chief Marknow came, first in the police, Chief Suarez was first in the fire department. And then Nick Erickson, who I believe was on, was on the meeting, came as representative of DPW. And in doing that, we walked through each of the major concerns we felt the board shared that night. And we had conversations about what should we do and how should we address that? Again, they're going to leave that to Randy in a little bit. But after having those discussions, working with the police department and the fire department and DPW, we have some ideas that we like to share. Nick in particular has some information, I think, that he likes to show us to share because he's, he's made a great asset already to this, what we're doing here. What I should say to you is, it will be upfront and say that it was interesting as we were standing outside 270 Westminster Street that morning. Guess what happened? A truck pulled up. So we got to see the truck. And one of the things I will say and I will acknowledge that the police chief, fire chief, and Nick, and even all of us kind of said was, there's definitely concerns about that easement and the idea of the trucks doing, they're crossing the double yellow line twice. Once going across and going back across the other way. So we understand that that's a concern. I should let you know that the, what we're going to show you, I do have, and I can pass it around if you want to see them. Well, I have easements. If you want to see the easement, you can pass that around. I think it was part of the present, what we submitted. But also I do have an email from Chief Marknow and a letter from Chief Suarez saying that they support what we have in place here and what Randy's got to talk about right about now as well. So just want to be sure of that. And I think that's what I'll turn over and I'll let the, the construction guys dive in, so.
Great. Yeah. And as Tom, as Tom mentioned, there is, right, there is in fact an easement, a recorded easement that exists. It basically allows rights to the property across the street, 291 Westminster, to use that area for access and accessing his driveway. There we go, right there. Yeah. To make up basically a wide truck maneuver to pull in. So this plan here is what we, that's okay. This plan here is what we have, is what we share with both police, fire, as well as with, with Nick from DPW. And basically it addresses, I think, we hope, we think it addresses their concerns as well as the comments and concerns we heard at the last meeting. If you look to the, to the, I guess, to the, to the, to the right-hand side, I guess, the eastern portion of the property, where that's across from 291, the driveway across from 291. That would be good. So basically what we've done is we've created two, two 36-foot wide curb cuts. If you recall previously, just one gigantic open curb cut on safe condition. So we've, you know, to help make it be much more safe from a vehicle circulation standpoint. There's two curb cuts, both 36 feet wide. We've also added some stop signs, stop bars, some traffic flow arrows. Again, just to kind of help motorists and tell motorists what, you know, what, what, what can and can't be done in terms of turning maneuvers. And the, the island there between those two curb cuts is proposed to be a sloped granite curbing. And that would be to, basically to allow trucks, it's basically like a mountable curb in case trucks did, since there is an easement that exists there, trucks could technically ride over that curb and still access the driveway across the street. So that's that area there. We've also, since based on our meeting with police, we have removed the crosswalk that goes to the sidewalk on the other side of Westminster. Since there's going to be no, really no student walkers here, we talked it over with police. He's okay with not having a crosswalk here. So we've since removed it from, from the, from the previous plan. And if we, just kind of continuing to go plan right to plan left, I know we heard some comments about the trash enclosure, the type of fencing. We are now proposing a six-foot-high gray vinyl fence. And it would be basically essentially matched to match the building color. That's the gray that we would, that we would like to do. We think so. And again, continuing towards the plan left here, on the other side of the site, I guess you'd call it the backside. Again, if you recall, there was really, there's two, and if we can pan over just a little bit, that would be helpful. There was really two really wide curb cuts, one on Westminster, one on Temple. We've, we've reduced those both to 36 feet wide. They're both also over 50 feet from the intersection. And again, similar to the other side, we've added some stop bars, some traffic flow arrows, just to help kind of direct motorists where they can go and what, what turning movers, maneuvers are allowed. And the other item that we spoke about with, with DPW, and I know it was mentioned at the, at the last meeting, is that island there? The island at the, at the intersection. We know there was a request to add some landscaping there. The island is basically, I'd say 95% of it is on the city's property. We talked it over with DPW. We're hoping you're going to be okay with doing just some, like some stone in that area versus landscaping. We think the landscaping really won't survive. It's used for a lot of snow storage in the winter. Again, that was based on our discussions with, with DPW at our, at the previous meeting. But let's see, in terms of other items, I think I hit on most of the changes that we made. It's kind of the highlights. We're hopeful that you folks are okay with it. And we hope it addresses some of your, your, your previous comments. And I'd like to, I mean, I don't know if you folks would, we'd love for Nick to speak also, if that's okay. He had some good insight. And I know that they are, he's had some discussions with Mass DOT about some roadway improvements out here also. So.
Hey, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. There's no raise hand function like there is with Zoom. So I wasn't sure if I should just jump in or what. But thanks to Randy and his, his team working on this. They've made a lot of changes based on our initial meeting a couple of weeks ago. And it seems to check all of, all of our boxes at, at DPW as far as relining the curb cuts and shrinking them down and so forth. I do want to mention that Mass DOT has accepted the city of Pittsburgh into their municipal paving program, which means we'll, we'll be receiving assistance from them with repaving state-numbered routes throughout the city on an annual basis. So the first stretch of roadway that they'd like to tackle is routes 31 and 2A, essentially from the Princeton Road area down through the roundabout at Kimball, Daniels, and River Street. So obviously that, that passes right by this project at 270 Westminster Street. So I had a conversation with Mass DOT to kick off that, that initial project. They want to perform a site visit, but I've made a few asks of Mass DOT in relation to this project. Number one, helping with berms and curbing along the frontage of this property along Westminster Street. That would reduce the, the total cost to the applicant. And I don't have an answer yet. It'll, it'll depend on what Mass DOT sees during the site visit and what their ultimate decision is. But that's, that's an ask that I've made so far. The other ask that I've made is, is to address the, the turn, the turning situation into 291 Westminster Street that, that was mentioned just a few minutes ago. So if you're approaching 291 Westminster Street, headed eastbound on Westminster Street, and you're trying to take that right into the facility and your tractor trailer truck, what you need to do is essentially cross that double yellow center, center line twice, as was mentioned, to be able to, to clear the utility pole that's right on the corner there at the, next to the driveway for 291 Westminster Street. So it's, it's kind of an unsafe maneuver. I'm glad we got to witness that while we were out there doing a site visit because the tractor trailer truck really just blocks traffic for the full, you know, minute or so that he's, he's executing that turn. So one of the things that I have asked DOT about is the, the potential, potentially relocating that utility pole that's right in the corner of that driveway apron to 291 Westminster Street, moving it a little bit further west and then rounding that corner to allow tractor trailer trucks to turn right into that facility without executing that, that button turn, requiring crossing the W's, double yellow center line, driving onto the property of 270, and then cutting back across the street. So I'm hoping that they're willing to accommodate that request because that's more of a, a public safety matter than an aesthetic issue or, or anything else. But those are a couple of issues that, that remain to be seen and will be determined after, after we get final decision from Mass DOT. So I wanted to make the board aware of that. Assuming the, the worst case, let's say Mass DOT says we're going to pave the road and nothing more. That's still fantastic. The road badly needs it. But that would essentially mean that we've, we've got to accommodate that, that right-hand button turn for tractor trailer trucks headed eastbound on, on Westminster Street. So Randy has shown mountable curbing in that area just in case. If we're able to successfully work with Mass DOT to relocate that utility pole, I don't think mountable curbing will be necessary in that area. So we could potentially look at either an asphalt berm or granite curbing. And then the other ask obviously is, is to have Mass DOT install that granite curbing or asphalt berm instead of putting that on Monty Tech. So that's kind of where we're at right now. There's a few things up in the air. And I'll know more once we have a site visit performed by Mass DOT and a finalized agreement with them. So we'll have to keep everyone involved updated on, on that as it progresses. But I think the, the site plan that Randy's prepared right now addresses all of our concerns and basically takes into account the worst-case scenario of DOT saying, we're not going to do anything to help you. You guys are on your own.
So if there's going to be any type of change, you know what timeline that might be occurring to expectations?
So the, the goal is, Mass DOT's goal is to complete this before the end of their fiscal year. So they were hoping to maybe squeeze the project in prior to, to winter. But just based on the, the timeline so far with our initial meeting and then site visit, which still hasn't been scheduled, I'm guessing they're going to start sometime this spring. So I, I'm guessing like an April, April 15th or later start date with Mass DOT's contractor. Because once we have the site visit, there's still some planning and, planning and prep work that needs to be, needs to be done. So I really don't see them getting out here this fall to take care of it.
So there might not be a mountable curb needed at this location, but probably where, I'll say with the, with that, like, you know, the triangular pieces outlined, that would be potentially granite curbing.
So Randy's got it shown right now as, as asphalt berm. And right now, what's out there is, is asphalt berm. So that was shown to match up with existing. He shows mountable granite curbing across from the driveway entrance to 291 Westminster Street just solely because that's, that's what's needed to stand up to the abuse of a tractor trailer truck driving over it. An asphalt berm wouldn't last there. So.
Well, I meant behind, with a pyramid behind it, like if, if there is no multiple, if you're saying, I'm not sure if I understood correctly, but if there's no granite curb with the improvement, and what else would you do to delineate? Is that where you're saying, asking Mass DOT to actually put in granite curbing?
Yeah. So if, if Mass DOT is willing to, to, to make a few, help us out with a few requests for this project, I'll ask them to install granite curbing along the entire frontage of Westminster Street. See what they say. If they say, no, we won't install granite curbing at all, then we would defer back to this site plan that's shown here. So closer to Temple Street, Randy shows asphalt berm. And then across from 291, he shows the mountable granite curb. And I'm okay with that because it matches what's, what's out there right now. And I'm guessing that Mass DOT would at least be able to install asphalt berm. And I can likely get them to install granite curb. But I, I can't fully commit to anything until I have that site visit with them and we work out a, a, a formal agreement.
But you're okay with what's proposed here?
Yes, I am okay with what's proposed here. And actually, the DPW has had on their radar along the Temple Street side of the site to replace that berm and address an ongoing drainage issue with water coming down Temple Street and then seeping through the cracks in that existing berm and getting down into the site. So, so DPW is planning to do that work at some point. It just, we've, we've got a long list of, of projects to do, and this is, this isn't necessarily at the top. But knowing that this site is being redeveloped and Monty Tech wants to go in there, that helps us, helps us bump this up in the priorities. We could potentially take care of this next spring.
So I'll mention those, the driveway opening on Westminster Street has been reduced to 36 feet. It is also greater than 50 feet from the intersection. But is there really a need to have that as an egress point? I bring this up because it's, it's, it's been a habitual issue with people cutting through that parking lot constantly. So whether or not, whether you, if you think that you need to have that opening, whether or not you put like some bollards on the ends to be able to like change.
So we do need, because again, the one bus that will bring the kids down from the school is going to go and either we'll have it come up Temple Street, take a right into that parking lot, drop the kids off. We actually prefer that it takes the left from Westminster Street because then where the kids are getting off is right next to the building and they would walk right into the building. And then the bus would pull right out and go around. So we, we actually do need kind of the entrance and exit.
Yeah, just trying to think of those cut through because we want to kind of eliminate some of that too, so.
I mean, we could certainly add some, we can add some signage. To help address some of the cut through. That would be helpful.
I think narrowing that curb cut up, or both of those curb cuts up, and then adding in some, some striping will go a long way. I think right now people just see this large asphalt opening.
True. I guess, and the other pieces, you said the property line, where does the property line go to the tip on Temple Street there?
It is the property line. This is the, this is the, this first line is the.
That's okay. Touch screen.
It's actually this, it's the side line here towards the left. That's not a property boundary right there. So yeah, this entire island.
City.
Large majority of it's within, within this property.
When you talk about landscaping, it's like, I hate to see stone. That's just to be not exactly great hardscape and weedy and all that wonderful stuff. I know it's lawn now. It'd be great if we could stay lawn. If it's looking like it should, you know, to have some stone in the front, I would request that, you know, where that, that your new shape art goes around, to actually just put some shrub plantings like around the end. So it's just not looking like here's stone and just right up to the, you have some type of little bit of a.
Okay. You got, yeah.
But a part of it is. And you can also consider it like, you know, a darker stone rather than just being like stone. Something colored that actually looks like, I think we just recently Chantel was on some that was like brown.
The place that just did the still.
Fairbanks, Fairbanks Power Equipment has a stone apron in front of theirs, like a light brown.
Wasn't approved. Okay. Supposed to be lawn. Working on that. Yeah. It kind of like jumps out at you. But I, yeah, I like the color of that. I know what you're, yeah.
Especially where it's going to have snow on it for six months a year. It's going to be.
Yeah. So that, that kind of makes sense. But if you do like a little shrubbery right around, right around the end, it's not visually, you know, nothing huge.
All the purple and gold flowers we.
Get your moms a season.
Over there. I think you've done a great job in addressing some challenging aspects of what they.
Again, I kind of asked a layman's question last time, so I'm going to ask another one. In the situation where there is a question about an easement, who? We're not the owners. We didn't do the easement. Is it our responsibility to point out to the owners that there's a concern with the easement? Or I guess we just kind of were wondering if, if something's supposed to be said to the owners that there's a problem with the easement?
Well, as if you're going to be leasing the property and it's impeding your use of it, yes. Because that's something that can, can be modified between parties.
That's all we just. If there literally was a form that we're supposed to bring that.
You can't. Sometimes they're, they're, you know, historic easements of like right to pass and repass types of things. And areas that are just going with the property, but versus something where the.
Sure.
Putting restrictions on their deeds for certain things, but can be, in some cases can be, can be changed.
Paul, I had a question about that for the board, if you don't mind.
Sure.
So the, the issue of tractor trailer trucks going eastbound on Westminster Street and then. and then taking that right-hand turn into 291 and crossing W yellow center line twice, it's kind of a safety concern. Is there anything that the board can do or any action that the board can take to, to prevent them from encouraging that turning movement? Cause it's, it's not really something that, that I'm okay with because it does cause that safety issue of, of basically obstructing traffic for the, the 60 seconds or so that it takes for the tractor trailer truck to execute that turn. I don't know if there's some sort of a, an approval that was given to 291 Westminster Street during their planning board review process. But I just, just thought I'd throw that out there. If there's anything the board can do to, to discourage that, that turning movement, I think it's.
Anything mentioned in those records went back into the 19.
I don't think that ever came up.
That never came up as an issue. There was, there was landscaping discussed in those like approvals back then. And actually for the landscaping, they didn't show across the building as well. So there was no mention of any type of easement. I'm not sure what's like when the, does, does the individual owns 291 also own across the street?
Something did it on test.
Or they still do?
So again, the, the formal easement that we have was signed January 23rd, 2023.
New easement. It was put in in January of 23. It was registered with the registry deeds. And the people that we are in contact with, at least manage both properties, we'll say.
I'm sorry.
The, our contacts, Roy and the other gentleman, manage both properties. It's two different LLCs. One LLC owns.
291 LLC and then 270.
Right. And it was a dollar, dollar, dollar agreement type. I think there is some. Was there some verbiage in the easement about?
Yeah, that speaks to if there's a violation of local laws or something like that.
Unexclusive temporary.
Yeah, if you look at number four of easement, that's where.
Do you want a copy of the key? It's actually the first one.
Says if, if any of the provisions of this instrument are declared invalid or unenforceable by any government authority of competent jurisdiction, remaining provisions of their instrument shall remain in full force and effect as if the invalid or unforeseeable provision was admitted in the entirety from the stock in.
Did Chief Martino say anything?
I guess one, one, like we're not, I was going to say, we're not the legal department.
Yeah, neither am I.
Chief did mention that he, he did not like that, that button turn was, was being done on a regular basis. He, he was not happy with this either.
Any type of traffic code, that's where the enforcement would come in. It's like you can't cross W line. It's like get to notify the property owner to that fact that they're not complying with like city or state code on, on traffic for making a turn by crossing the lines.
We, we can follow with them. That's my question. We didn't know if it came from the planning board or.
And again, when we have, of course, a concern and to what with you.
Sure.
Comes into the parking lot for students. Yeah. It's like, cause it's going to go over that multiple curve. How far into that? It's like, it's going to go over the multiple curbs, so to that area that's triangular, the shadow on there, that's awesome. Try to go up to that, the limits of it. I'll say the limits of it are not defined here. So all we see is going over the multiple curve. It, how far would they go?
That's what the easement is on.
Correct.
I love that when we all watching the truck make the turn, they would get, you know, hard hard one in so they have like room. I think it also depends like they would use the space that they had available to them. So if they were, you know what I'm saying? So an empty lot, they would make a much wider turn into the parking lot. So I don't know. I, I, our concern has been if the easement is being dissolved, then you put in a different granite curb. If the easement is not being dissolved, then do we need to put that mountable curb in?
It, here's another point, whether or not it's an impediment or not, but you see the pitch, the, the top of the triangle, whether or not there's any type of like bollard or anything like that to help define where the actual end is so they don't, it's like you can only go this far in your turn.
Well, now we have traffic going right in and out, like just cars.
Yep. It's an issue. I did recently see some like bridge work being done, I'll say recent, maybe this past year over there had been an issue with a prior permit. At one point in time, they applied for a permit for a cannabis facility there. The bridge was definitely a problem, a pinch point for that project. So we can see that there's work being done, but it was always about trying to, you know, it needs to accommodate what the use is there and it's very narrow understandably. So even for the tractor trailers, you know, it's an industrial use. Does any board members have?
I, I think the improvements and the alterations you've made to the property, you know, really, really enhanced the property and they satisfy all the concerns that the board had and satisfy the concerns of the city. It's a great project. I think the, I think the, the site has a right group working on it. If you can't do it, nobody can. You've got all the resources in the world and if all we have to worry about is that easement, if you guys are willing to work with that and eyeing it out over time, whatever happens, happens with that. You know, I don't see, see that as a, a huge stumbling block in the project. And I just, just want to see things move forward as quick as possible.
Are we going to get started?
And maybe also helpful too, this is headed on the 291 side to be employee parking and not student parking.
The 291 side, both the eastern lot? Yeah, there's not. Staff parking, there's not having students drive to the site. Students will be picked up at our campus and bus down and one bus load.
Maybe you look at the designation on that, some place there about staff parking on that side. It's just, it just, we're just trying to work with that safety aspect of, you know, there's going to be adults parking on that side and there's students and it's truck turning and everybody's, students are totally expected beyond the opposite.
Correct.
The opposite side of the building. It's a, another emphasis.
Yes.
It's, I think it looks great.
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
It's a public hearing, I ask you. Does anybody, anybody else virtually that has any comments? I don't know if there's, is there a raise a hand function here? See?
Now, does anybody have comments? If you can't find the raise, raise the hand function, just unmute.
Hello?
Hello Diane.
Hi, I just, just got the right link for this meeting. I was given another link, it didn't work. I apologize for coming in late. Did you talk about Lancaster Street yet?
We did not. Not yet. Right now on Westminster Street.
Okay, thank you.
If there's anybody else who can use the unmute function. Is there anybody who isn't present there? I'd like to comment or question.
The only, I just wanted to mention too, we did provide an updated elevation also with the sign too. Yeah.
This is an exciting project and I'm, I'm thrilled to hear there's going to be some road improvements too.
No, that isn't, but it looks something different, something looks.
Oh, A1 first.
There it is. Oh, it's got dogs on it. It's something looks.
Zoom in on that side. What the dogs are.
And we have start next month, open fall of 24.
Chantel, if you could zoom in on that bottom left corner where it says MVP, see the black kind of corner, a little higher, just a little higher at that. So you could zoom in on that, that will show like the signage that we're proposing.
Thank you.
I don't know what the dogs are, I'm sorry.
You're doing great.
So this is the east side of the east elevation, yeah.
Oh, that's nice one.
The MVP is Montechusid Vocational Partnership in line with districts that we're, we're working on.
That's so cool.
It is nice.
The ruler and like the bolt and the.
Carventry, plumbing and electrical.
That's the current programs that we're putting.
Our graphic structure did. Outreach group came up with the name. Design and then we like the purple backlighting just to add some additional lighting on the outside of the building, it'll look really sharp, I think.
Oh, that's actually lit?
Purple backlight, yeah, it's really, it'll be really sharp.
The building itself is going to be purple.
The building itself is gray.
Right?
We're not going to go nuts.
I think you said previously, I was like, okay. All right.
No, I think that's it, just those, those three items, easement.
Trash and that's enclosed as well. You've got the, you've got exterior building lighting, you've got landscaping along Westminster block side of the building. With that, you're going to add a little bit of light weight just to the closest portion of your property line on the end by temple. There and what else?
Are we using our curb cuts smaller over here? We discussed that a little bit, I didn't know if that was.
I think they were just made smaller.
Yeah, we gotta reduce them to the 36.
The maximum. But they were really large. They were non-existent. So that's a substantial improvement of.
If I'm correct, if I'm wrong, Randy, but we're pulling them from the Temple Street. We're pulling them up Temple and east on, so the curb cut will be closer to the building as opposed to shrinking it from the building, which will give you even more distance from the intersection.
Yes, correct. It's shifting away, so before they were too, very close to the intersection. Now it actually will, you know, more be more defined as an intersection.
And I bet it won't be an issue with the.
Yeah, hopefully that'll discourage motorists.
But the landscaping with like signage and stuff.
And we've been saying, and just what you were saying, we're asking that the fact that it's been an empty building for, the people are just used to being.
And I think it's the people who toured that Victoria Lane and then their.
Most of them come down through there.
And we did send out a, a little newsletter to all the residential homes around there saying, hey, your new neighbor's moving in, Monty Tech, we're looking forward to it. So people are aware that we're going to be there at some point.
I guess one, I'll have a follow-up with Nick, whether or not Mast D O T's actually going to do the sidewalks or just pave the road.
Yeah, we're not part of those conversations.
Once we meet with Mast D O T, we can follow up with, with the board. Certainly we'll follow up with the, the Monty Tech team as well, just to keep everyone in the loop as to, to what's going on and who's going to ultimately be responsible for what. Hopefully it's Mast D O T's responsible for everything on Westminster Street.
And we're all looking forward to that. It is like one of the main entrance ways, so. So if that piece is there, anything else?
Yep. A motion to close the public hearing?
The motions were made to close the hearing with a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Question? Anybody have anything? We've made a lot of improvements since the last meeting, so we pretty much, I believe, adjust all the items. Anything further that needs to be done on that multiple curb aspect? We can come back for modification later, but those plans at this point in time. And I guess just requesting that maybe again, you put a sign on that back lot of like staff parking. And you're going to be marking the pavement as well with all the arrows and the specs. Delineating all the handicap spaces and delineating all the parking spaces on the, on the property.
Did you want to add some conditions or a bit more?
That was, I think I was talking about it. That was adding the staff part, the sign, adding the landscaping by temple along the end of the property. Like show, like showups.
Showups.
Same low. Any something else?
On the final, on the dumpster.
It's already there on the plan.
Do you want that as a condition too?
It's already on plan, so it's all good. There's the signage, the staff side, you got that?
Yeah, I got the signage for the staff side, yeah.
Say to maintain that final enclosure of this.
Okay.
There's standards about just maintaining landscaping. And then typically that should, the landscaping aspect should be done. All the exterior improvements should be done prior to occupancy. Do you think there'd be an issue with any of that?
No.
A motion to approve the site plan for 270 Westminster Street, Monty Tech side of our campus.
Seconded.
With that conditions. Motion's made with a second. All those in favor say aye, all those opposed say a posse and we'll take a roll call. Alex?
Aye.
Lynn?
Aye.
Amanda?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Thank you so much, everybody. We appreciate it. Get that shovel. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Chantel.
Thanks for inviting me to the open.
And now we're on to other business. And we have zero Lancaster Drive city storage, just that anybody's here online.
Yes, Diane's here, but she's not the applicant.
I'm looking for the applicant.
He was, oh, right here.
Sorry, I said online, you were here. Would you like to come up to the bench?
Sure. I have.
I'm John Harrison. So that's the new front facade. We, we don't have the plan drawn yet, but we wanted to get the approval. We put the portico over the front porch and we.
Can you show that please?
Yeah, let me, let me share.
I don't know if I'm supposed to be talking.
Yes.
You're all right, we're all set, thank you.
And yeah, so there's the photo. Can you see that?
Yes, I can, thank you.
And then there is the.
Plan's the same plan, it's just we did that.
So it doesn't really, they don't look the same. And I have to say, on the photo, I don't like that elevated entryway on like a second floor entryway in the front, it's.
The elevations aren't going to be, they're not going to be exact. The elevations aren't gonna be, they're not gonna be exact, because I'd have to find the exact house somewhere to do it.
What you're saying is...
Yeah, so the front...
The portico will follow.
Yeah, the portico and that second A in the back, and we're gonna go all white with the same shutters.
Let's go back to the, just go in the front, just look at the front. Now you could probably flip it to... Yeah. There we go.
So, yeah, there'll be a portico.
Yep.
That grade, the way it is on this plan, is correct grade.
Yep.
And obviously it will drop down as you go right to accept the drive under garage to the right. And there'll be a second A in the back of that A that's to the left, and we'll put a portico over the front door. And it'll be white with the black shutters.
Did we ask though whether you could differentiate like the middle piece or something, a different...
Say that again?
The middle piece, so it's just not all the same vinyl across even the projection in the front?
So on the top of that, there's shake shingles above that window in the middle, is that what you mean on the A? I, I'm sorry, so, so you guys...
You're not depicting it here, it's like, but that's just a little piece.
So imagine the foundation directly under that porch, and from there up, everything would be the same.
I guess it's still looking at whether or not it's, it's like, it's all, it's all just the same. It's the same vinyl. It's like, why can't it be some type of stone or brick or something a little different on that front?
Whoa.
Like piece to make, it's not looking like it's all still flat faced when...
If we wanna know that we put something there that changes it, but, and I wanna, I don't know how to say this without being offensive, but this is Lancaster Street. I lived on Albee, so I'm allowed to say this for eight years, which is two seconds away from there. And for me to put a cultured stone on the front of that, that, I don't know if you know how much that is.
Can you do another kind of vinyl?
I could do shake, that's what I was saying, I could do shake shingles on the front of that.
So Mr. Harris, this is Diane, I lived on Lyman Avenue, which is right, right across from where you're gonna build these buildings. I've been here every year of my life except for the first five, and I think any structure that you're gonna build on Lancaster Street should be as good as it can be, because you know you're gonna make your money back. So I don't, I don't like the comment about you living on Albee Street for a few years and making that comment that it doesn't need to have as good as it can be, because you're gonna make your money back anyways.
Thank you, Diane.
So can I just address the board on that?
You can address the board, but I would like to address that comment too, so.
Yeah, so whatever is in everybody's head of what I make, cut it in half, because that's what I really make. I gotta pay taxes on what I do.
I'm not even concerned about what you make, I'm concerned about, it's the city of Fitchburg and we deserve better.
So, and I build a great house, and this is, that's, I don't know how someone can look at that, not... So it's finally getting to me now, I was really good last meeting. This is really nice house, this is an, it's not a cheapo house, I'm just saying. I can't build here what I built on Alpine or what I built on Pearl Hill Road, I just can't do it or I'd go broke.
How does the color of this house turn out to be white? When we were talking about this at the last meeting, I recall it was beige.
Yeah, and you guys didn't like that.
People are getting kind of bored with that color.
That's why I went to the white.
If they're bored with beige, you're really bored with white.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Oh, yeah, oh, come on.
So, so can you guys pick the color?
We were talking about a color like a deep blue or one of those colors that'll really stand out.
Okay.
This, you may think that house looks good. I think it looks very plain.
Okay, we can, so...
And I, I think it needs enhancements, the neighborhood deserves it, and I think you're gonna have to do something to that house to make it look quite a bit better.
What color do you want me to make it?
Well, if I had a color palette in front of me and vinyl samples, I could pick one out.
I bought one last time.
Where is it? I don't have it right now. This is unfair, it's just, and I agree, and I agree with Diane that that house needs some kind of a, something different on that part that sticks out in the front. And I'm also...
That's fine, I'll, I'll put something different.
Whether it be stone or something like that.
How about shake shingles that are a different color?
Maybe a different color, if it's a different shade.
Yeah.
I agree with the chair, that approach to that front doorway, I hope that's not what it's gonna look like.
No, he said that's, that's, don't think of it as elevated, think of it as ground level, that's like...
Ground level?
Yeah.
Ground level I can buy.
Like, it's like the plan, the elevation on the...
I, I, I don't like the idea of you thinking that you wanna build a house of lesser quality, because it's in the neighborhood.
Quality, sir, it's that I have square footage requirements that I have to do so that I don't build something that doesn't make sense. Great, I lived there, I built two houses on Albee Street, less than a quarter mile, not even a tenth of a mile from there.
Yeah.
And I sold both of them and they're beautiful houses, they're both Cates with the same drive under on the right hand side. Excellent houses, but I didn't build a 1700 square foot ranch like the picture I had last time I was asked to build. I can't do it, I can't even fit it on the lot. So we're trying to do this.
The house is okay, we're just looking for enhancements.
In which I'm very open to, and like I said, I could do shakes on the front, a different color. I'm, so, so just so you know, I'm in the middle of doing a white house with black shutters, the same exact thing up in Temple, New Hampshire, on a very big house, different than that, it's a ranch, it's a 2,000 square foot ranch, that I've gotten more compliments on, because it looks awesome. One thing, you know what we could do, if, I, I guess you don't like the white, I love it, but we could put, what if we put the, um, the bat, board and batten on the front? You know what that looks like? It looks like a barn board with a laugh board over the seams, it looks really, really nice. What if we put that on that front portion, that would look awesome.
I'm not sure the house is in character with that kind of a look. You know, that, that to me is something that's maybe on a, a house that's got a lot of wood on it or something like that, this...
We're talking basically a vinyl sided house here.
But it's fine, but it's fine, all right?
Yeah.
I like that, I like that.
Nice shake.
Do you just like it all the way through?
No, no, I like what, what he's describing, or the shakes. I definitely think...
Whichever one you guys would rather.
Yeah, this is, this is one of the problems. We really have to see it.
We're close.
We wanna see an elevation with what you propose. You know, and it's difficult for us to approve something when we're simply talking about it and not seeing it.
I just thought, the white is such a nice color now, I can't even believe... T, can you go see if my color chart's, oh no, it's not in the Jeep. It's in the truck.
You changed the window?
The center window is, we talked about it being a little arched, that is arched.
Yeah, I just don't have a plan for it all yet, but yes, that's gonna have, it takes a while to develop a plan, I'm trying to get all this done, so I... How's those colors? With the shakes, I do the shakes on the top.
That's nice color. Yep.
Are we good?
You showed us last week, is that...
No, I didn't show that, I think that was the other, the other gentleman that's not here.
Oh, I was wondering how we can show.
Can you make a comment, do you need a shake for that?
Yeah, there's a shake that, so. That is shakes, all up there is shakes.
Yeah, that's a nice one.
It's, it's great.
Alex needs to show me a photograph. It is a ranch, but it's got, it does, it's like a grayish...
Do you wanna see it? Hold it, show it to whoever.
Are we sharing, we're sharing the screen, so you're not, not gonna see any of it.
It's very hard for me to see it, I can't see it.
One second.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's very difficult, because you just show up as a small square.
Yeah, I see, I see a man holding a phone in his hand, that's what I see.
Okay.
What are the colors of my first two homes?
That one is a green with a tan shake.
John, can you email me that?
Yeah.
What I can do is I'll just run to my desk and I'll forward it to...
And she can open it?
Yeah.
C flag, right?
Yes. I'll just, I'll go do that.
I'll put colors. For Lancaster, I'll run that.
So the gentleman that's speaking, is it John Harris or John Harrison?
It's Harrison.
Harrison, okay. Did, Mr. Harrison, did you buy the land already?
Yeah, so Diane, you need to put question to the board, you can't question, yeah.
Well, that's my question.
Do I have to answer that?
Well, I'll ask a, through the board, the question is...
I haven't, it's contingent on me getting all this figured out.
It's, it's difficult.
Yeah.
There's the answer, I guess contingent upon permit approvals.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. And I think we approved the landscaping plan last...
Yeah, and the, um, the grading plan and the, and I believe, I don't...
Two whole aspects and then...
Yeah, yeah, I think, I don't know if she got the check offs though from engineering and stuff on that yet, do you know if Chantel had gotten? She was gonna double check with engineering on the, where those, those trees were in the front. And how the, I think the fence in the back.
Nick and Jeff are here. They remember seeing and commenting on this project.
They commented a lot because of the wall in the back, change of the retaining wall.
So can I...
We did ask to look into, for the developer to look into, there's some like pretty scrappy shrub, shrubbery on Lancaster Street, if that can be removed, it's in the public way, but it should just be taken down, it would against the landscaping over there, probably in sight distance too.
That's, that has to come down just for us to even get started on it.
So just that's just asking, that's just asking DPW permission to do it.
Yeah.
Typically isn't an issue when you're trying to clean things up.
So can I ask the board a couple of questions while we're waiting?
Go ahead, Diane.
Okay, so did the, I think from the last meeting you said the DPW had to approve the landscaping plans, did they do that?
The DPW is not approving landscaping plans as much unless there's anything being planted within the public way, but we did request that the applicant look at, there's some pretty bad shrubbery already in the public way that needs to be removed, whether or not, just to allow them to remove it.
So have the landscaping plans been approved by the board?
Yes.
Okay, and what about, did I hear that engineering was supposed to be looking at the retaining wall?
That was done at the last meeting, yeah.
Yeah, I know, we discussed it last meeting, but did they have to approve that or no?
That was, that was approved already.
So engineering approved the retaining wall?
Yes, well, they gave comments on it and it was okay.
Okay, so those two things are done?
Yes, this is, and we also approved the design of the two houses on the other lots, and this is just the remaining one.
Yeah, no, I, I wrote my notes from the last meeting, so I kind of, it was, you know, knew what I was gonna be hearing tonight.
Sure.
So...
That's okay. We're gonna be pulling up the, the image.
Thank you.
I don't have that white house to build, I wish you could see that.
So John, you built those two houses on Albee Street, huh?
Well, again, Diane, don't ask the upper question.
Okay, well, you know, I know which houses you're referring to, because they're right around the corner from where I live, and I always wondered who built those houses. And I know Alpine Road, because my sister lives on the top of Alpine Road, so I'll talk, be talking to her about the houses that have been built up there.
Only one, to the board, I'm only one of the houses up there, some that have been built for three years. You don't have a picture of the house in temple, do you?
It's still yours, all right, hopefully.
Thank you for stealing that from me, Chantel.
Oh, you're welcome.
Oh, you got it. Yeah, but I can't share, well, because I'm not on. I like it.
Yeah, it looks good.
Yeah, see how the shake's up here?
What color is that, is that like a blue or a gray?
No, that's one of the colors I'm doing, that's, they're already approved. Thank you. I can't remember what the teal, is it the teal? No, no, it's like a, something similar to that, yeah. That is a, it's a vinyl stone, it's a vinyl silken type stone. It's not, it's not stone, it's a vinyl product.
So I'm not seeing it on the screen?
So you'd like to see that on the front?
What, the vinyl stone?
Yeah. I mean, it's, that's the...
I like the shake too.
Yeah.
As long as it's like different from the rest of the house.
And I would agree that Fitchburg is a great city, as a matter of fact. Well, two times a year for four years, my, my church went into Fitchburg and did over $40,000 worth of work in the city with me and my wife. Next, open, working, painting bridges, painting the gazebo down, I love Fitchburg, I've been here a long time.
Diane, I've been sharing the image. I did mail it to you, I don't know if you could get into your email.
You sent something to me via email?
I did, I'm having a hard time sharing the image.
Okay, let me, I, I got an email, hold on, Chantel, thank you very much for being so kind.
No, it's not popping up.
It's, it's...
Okay, I see something now. Yeah, it depicts this, yeah, okay, well, the color looks nice, I like this bluish gray color. I like, I actually like the house there, are you gonna build this house?
That's what I had to do. To the bottom of the email, now, now, see, it showed up as an attachment on there.
Did you send it to Ellen and Alex?
I did.
Okay.
It's in your email, everybody.
Ellen and Alex, can you see the image?
Yeah, I think that looks nice.
Yeah, it's a really nice house, and I'll ask the board to ask Mr. Harrison, is that the house you, you can build for unit three?
That's not the house, that's the color we're looking at, it's still gonna be the other style, that's too strong, Colombian.
Well, I like that, I like the color of the house, I think it's nice.
No, that wasn't one or the other approved.
It doesn't fit the topography that's already there.
Oh, that's too bad.
And the depth wouldn't, it would, the house wouldn't...
That's a nice looking house.
Thanks.
So the board's in agreement, it's, he could, it's like, the color's great, and if you want, wanna do the, it's the shingle we're gonna put on the top, the top?
Yeah, correct me if I'm wrong, we're gonna build that color.
Yes.
It's gonna have all white trim.
Sure, yeah. That's the plan, that's what we typically do.
And the shakes are gonna be on all the peaks.
Yeah.
And down the front.
Sure, yeah, that's very fair.
And the black shutters.
The full column will be shakes and that A on the left will be shakes.
And black shutters.
Black shutters.
Looks good.
Very thankful.
I, I understand a hundred percent what you're saying, markets within markets, it's very, very true. However...
No, I know, and you'd need to protect that, that's why I get that.
We can still have a beautiful looking house, you might, where you might wanna cut down on different neighborhoods.
Yeah.
You might cut down a little bit on the kitchen, or the appliances, or the bathroom fixtures.
Tell my wife that, have fun telling her that.
We want, we want the outside to be really appealing to the neighborhood.
Makes sense, yeah.
Yeah, that's our focus.
Yeah.
Where we put the bathrooms, it's entirely up to you. Say, it's a, yep, an improvement to the area and...
Great.
Fit, fit right in. And, so any, might a board member have anything else to say? So we said that's that color with the blue gray.
White trim.
Show, trim.
This is a huge improvement on the base on the shutters.
I agree with that.
Even with the dark color adding it. The shakes on the.
The gables and down the front.
And front.
And black shutters.
Yeah.
So can I ask the board a question?
Then the portico, one moment, and then the portico also.
Is, the point of the portico will have it as well. So the portico will have the shakes on the front as well.
Columns on the front?
Yeah, we'll have columns, we'll have six by six columns on either side, yeah.
Make them, I was gonna say, yeah, they're gonna be like wrapped?
Yeah, they'll all be composite, yeah, on the outside, it'll be wrapped composite, yeah.
It's like coming by sometimes and it's like we see like these are add-ons and it's just like bare wood. And you're like, what's going on with this picture? Everything's looked great till that.
Fair enough.
One last comment.
Yeah.
On the, on the color choice, and I hope, I hope we're not shooting ourselves in the foot here because I love that color. That's a great color. I can't remember what the color of the first two are.
We don't want them to all be the same color.
So I'm hoping that they're not, they're not that color.
I know.
I do feel like we said we love this color at the last meeting. We actually have those materials here.
Yeah, do we have it somewhere else? I mean, I wish I brought that color thing in today.
The only thing I really don't want to see is two houses with the same color next to each other.
This is, this is the white one I was just talking about. It really looks awesome.
It do looks.
Corner where everything's. Like that's, that's really what I'd love to do and put that on the As and the front. And then the rest would be the white, like you have there.
Yeah.
That I would love to get approved. So if that. And there's other pictures with it. Go ahead.
It's like a thicker, so it'll be going this way and then the.
Shakes?
The one is as narrow as that.
Let's do that.
Oh, yep.
It's really sharp. Like I would rather get that approved because I know that's.
So that for the center?
That would go on the center, on the A and on the little A, and then the rest would be white. Yeah, yep.
So what's the color of the two, first two houses, unit one, unit two?
So you would.
Yeah, so I like that in white, like the way, you know what I mean, that.
And then what?
It was in an email, Chantel, right?
I, um.
Remember the color photos?
It looks good. And then we have shakes on the top. And then we have some, you can swole all around like that. Do I have it in? Do you like that?
It's okay. No, I like the looks of these shakes. The look of a colonial house like we have right here.
Well, I asked what colors were unit one and unit two?
Yeah, that's what we're looking for.
Oh, okay. Can I ask the board another question?
Sure.
Okay, so Lancaster Street is in pretty rough shape right now. And I'm sure it's gonna be worse before it gets better because of the construction's gonna happen. Will the city be paving Lancaster Street once the construction's over?
It's a good question. I don't know if this depended on what's being constructed at the, you know, this type of, this project. I don't know where Lancaster Streets would be a question to DPW on the list of streets.
Yeah, well, I, I assuming there's gonna be more damage done to Lancaster. Lancaster Street's in bad shape right now, okay? And I'm assuming it's just gonna get worse because of the construction that's gonna happen. So rather than try to fix it now and then fix it two years from now when the houses are being built, I'm just asking, can we somehow get, get it finally fixed once these houses are built?
I mean, it's a, it's a, I mean, that's everyone's request. We don't know, it's depending on what DPW schedule is for the streets.
Yeah, that's the other.
Okay, so that's one.
That's, that was one, and then the other ones are green with the tan.
I'm not sure if Nick or Jeff have any idea where Lancaster Street may fall into the.
So that was one.
Yeah.
And then the other one was the. Yeah, so it wasn't the dark blue. No, it wasn't the dark blue. The other ones are green with the tan.
All right.
So we're good. And we don't even need a vote, right? Is this over?
So what are the colors?
I thought that, I didn't know. Might as well.
We approved the other two, right? It's kind of like, it is for like upper temperature.
I got you, all right. All right, sounds great, thank you.
And, yep, so this is not, yep, so this is what's underneath. Other business, if someone liked to be promoted?
I'm wanting to approve my free house to be the color that we decided it was gonna be.
What color you wanna call that?
The gray blue.
Gray blue.
Gray blue.
With white trim.
White trim, black shutters.
Shingle.
Shakes.
Shakes, sorry, shakes.
On the, on the portico, the blowout and the A.
Are we writing these conditions soon for the first two houses? Did you decide colors and all of that, or are we just gonna write the pictures? Okay, grab the pictures.
Yeah.
Chantel, should we ask about that, taking ownership type, that thing now? You, okay.
The motion. And then write the columns wrapping and the portico on the front. Motions are made with the second, and all those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. All those opposed? Great.
I was, he's looking purchase this from a landowner. And so I didn't know if that's something he has to come back for or is it, it's something he can condition for where it's transferring ownership.
What did the original saying? I think it's coming back from, doesn't it?
It's a modification, yes. So.
Actually, if, if it's, if it's just a permit condition, it's not a modification if it's satisfying a permit condition. Typically on the permit, we have, upon approval by the board for transfer. So it's actually meeting, it's meeting a condition already that's in there.
The only thing that changed those in this project.
Hi, hi, everyone. Nick replied to us via the chat.
Oh, great.
That he has no plans to pave Lancaster Street in the immediate future. He suggests the condition of approval if the, be if the road is damaged during construction, the applicant be required to make repairs.
So the, the issue is that the road is damaged now. And I anticipate the road's gonna be further damaged because of construction. I wasn't asking if the city would, would take care of it now and then take care of it again later. I was just thinking that just take care of it once the construction is finished.
Yep, and that's dependent on what the paving schedule is for the city. Looks like it's gonna be a ways off though.
Well, these houses aren't gonna get built till 2025. The city's got two years to figure that out.
It's not dependent on what the house construction is, it's depending on the DPW paving schedule. I understand where you think, where it makes sense, yes, you know, we don't wanna damage a road with, with construction. So it would be prudent if it happened in that order, so.
So who's in charge of that schedule?
That is, again, our DPW Director for the City. So, but they're payment management assistant for that.
Okay, what is the, who is the person, what is the process for that?
For paving, it would be just contacting the DPW because there's, there's, there's the director and then there's divisions for streets.
Who is this Nick person that just?
That is the DPW Director, Nick Erickson.
Erickson, okay, I'll talk to him. Thank you.
You're welcome, Diane.
Where were we?
I was saying, this was, at least I had processed it as a modification with the retaining wall change.
Yes.
So.
We could just incorporate that because it's not written in.
Okay.
Yes. I may do that in there.
You just put that, put in the project description about subsequent meeting, blah, 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 and approve the following.
So what does that all mean?
We're gonna, we're gonna write the decision from the modification for the wall that will include the, what we've approved, that notate that we've approved the landscaping plan as submitted and, and the house styles as submitted by X, Y dates.
Okay, and that I'm gonna be building it?
And.
Well, the entity I told you is gonna be building it.
Right. So the, the part, Mr. Landorf, I think, I believe his name is, is going to be selling these properties to John.
The JHC Realty Trust, I guess.
JHC Realty Trust?
Yes.
I'm just trying to think, I'm just trying, trying to think of procedure. It's a permit condition that they just get approved from the board for the transfer. Though it's not exactly a modification. It's similar like how we just approved the landscaping, it's like subject to, it's a middle of landscaping plan, subject to some of the, of the house aspects for approval. Is also submitting for approval of the board of transfer. And JHC Realty Trust, of course, is registered with the Commonwealth?
Yes.
So did I hear that the two houses, the other, unit one, unit two, one's green and one's beige? Is that what I heard?
What color is green?
Yeah, green, beige is one.
Not beige, but it has like the, like, uh, clay, thank you.
So it's green and what?
Clay, clay.
What color is clay?
Gray, gray, brownish. Gray with hints of tan.
So gray is, is.
And Diane, we were kind of, we're done with the, on the housing colors.
I know, but, so some of you are speaking so softly, it's hard for me to hear what you're saying.
So in front of us, whether or not we wanna make also approval to transfer JHC, the H C real. Yeah, transfer ownership from.
City storage.
Now that's the permit, are you, were you purchasing the property as well if you also be the new owner?
Once the 20-day appeal period's up, I'm gonna, yeah, I'm gonna purchase it.
All right, that in form of a motion?
Motion to.
Transfer.
To transfer ownership to JHC Realty Trust.
Second.
With the second, all those in favor say aye, and all those opposed say oppose. Alex?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Amanda?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Paula?
Aye.
We'll wrap all of that into the single, singular decision.
Thank you very much.
Try to streamline that.
It's great, I appreciate that, yep.
Thank you for bringing it up.
Yeah, we have talked about it, yeah, we were, so, yeah, that's great. She's been very welcome, by the way.
Yes, we'll re-watch the video.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, much here, thanks.
Paula?
Is the restroom downstairs, and those ones were downstairs as well? Thank you very much.
Yeah, Paula for DPW?
Yep.
Will do, yep.
Hi, Paula.
Yes, Diane?
Yeah, so may I ask if there's any new documents that were submitted by Mr. Harrison that they, that I, that I can look at them? Can Chantel send them to me, please?
Everything's online on the, on the.
Well, I got the documents that were discussed last month. I didn't know if he submitted any new documents this month because when I went online, all I could find was the agenda for today's meeting.
Then maybe in the, on the website for that. You got it, on the agenda, there's a link to go to the site materials. And then bring to you.
Oh, to view materials, please visit, okay. So there's new documents there?
Yes.
For Zero Lancaster Street?
Yes, it's underneath other business. You look under the date, nine, 1923, then you go in the subfolder, other business and Zero Lancaster.
Yeah, okay.
And there's the house photo that was emailed, the white one, and, and the diagram.
Okay, all right.
And then, and part of the record's gonna be the photo that he just, you know, we just sent around.
Right, yeah. So will there be any more meetings about Zero Lancaster Street after tonight?
No.
No.
We hope.
Okay, um, okay. If I, after I look at the documents and the link, if I have any questions, who can I speak to?
That would be Chantel Flack of our Community Development Office.
Okay, but then does she have to ask you, if I, if I ask her questions that she hasn't the answers to, does she ask you?
Does she, she, depends what your questions are. Depends if it goes to a department head or which direction that what your questions are.
Okay, all right, well, I'll, I'll look at them, then I'll let Chantel know and hopefully, you know, we can find out what the answers are at some point. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome, Diane, thank you.
Thank you for protecting my neighborhood, I appreciate it.
We try, we're doing, we're doing our best.
You know, the first thing I have to worry about is my little house, my little piece of land. The second thing I have to worry about is my neighborhood. And then, and then I, then I think about my city. And of course, the city, city of Fitchburg is not just the place where I live. I've said this many times, city of Fitchburg is my home. I care deeply about it. And for people who used to live here, maybe they don't care about it as much as, as they just wanna make money. So it means, it means something to me because this is my home.
Well, as you can see, the board has spent a great bit of time trying to make sure to get it right.
Yes, and I appreciate, believe me, I said this to other people after last month's meeting, I do appreciate the expertise that's on this board. I was listening to everyone speaking last month's meeting and tonight's meeting. And I, and even though I know nothing about real, real estate, I do appreciate the expertise that I've been hearing from this board. So thank you, that, thank you very much for, you know, using that expertise and thank you for caring about the city of Fitchburg and especially my little neighborhood.
Well, thank you for participating too.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Helps craft it, thank you. Take care.
Yeah.
We have underneath other business this evening, the library renovation project at 610 Main Street. This is the anticipation of a full submission, submit, submit all for our October meeting. So they're trying to get some board feedback. And I'll mention that Paul and I did meet with some proposed development last, last Friday, which the library project did, show what they were proposing. They got a lot of feedback from the Building Commissioner's Office as well as different departments. And those are also in the folder, the feedback in that regard. So they're trying to address each of those bullet points. We do not yet have like a full developed site plan with all of the specs on it, but I think what we'll probably see tonight is some, at least some markup changes. And I'll get to you all through that from the, from the full board tonight to see what other changes. If anything else needs to be addressed before their full submission next month. If anything else needs to be addressed before their full submission next month, it's there on a, a tight timeline as well. Can you pull up the, is anybody here for me?
We have a few folks from our project, I'm sorry to jump in, we have a few folks here from our project.
Thank you.
Uh, if I mean... Sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Okay. Uh, good evening, everyone, I'm Matt Sters, project manager with, with Colliers, with the owners project manager on the library project, representing the City of Pittsburgh. We have a number of folks here who are on the call representing different stakeholders in the project, as well as members of our design team. I'll just briefly identify who some of the folks on the call are. Liz Murphy, who is, is there, is on our building committee for the library project. We're joined this evening by Library Building Committee co-chairs, Deb Henkel, library director, and Matt Brune from the Library Board of Trustees. And from our design team, we have both Jeff Hoover and Paula McCain from Tape Architects, as well as Amy Allen from Warner Larson, who is the landscape architect on the project. I think I also see on the bottom corner of my Hollywood squares here, Lenny, who may be Lenny Lacso, who is also on our Library Building Committee. So just to provide a, just a quick introduction by way of background, before we get into the updated plans that we're, we have that we're able to show the, the board this evening. As, as Paula said, you, the board has seen a couple of previous iterations of the library site plan at different stages of development, and we're excited to show you this evening how that has evolved into the, the current version, which we've come to after getting a considerable amount of, of feedback from a variety of, of city stakeholders and, and interests. So we'll be presenting an updated version of that. And recently, sort of the effort to, to advance that to a final version has really kicked into high gear. You know, as we have sort of gotten the, the drawings to a fairly advanced stage. We met first with the, with the department heads on September seventh, and following that, we got a, a great list of, of specific points of guidance from, it, from a big memo that was co-authored by Chantel and by Mark Barbadoro, the Building Commissioner. And so working through that checklist, we met with the police chief on Monday, the eleventh. Following that, we met with the fire department, Lieutenant Phil Jordan, who reviews plans on behalf of the fire department. And then, following that, we met with both DPW and engineering on last Wednesday, the thirteenth. And, you know, in working through the, the design with them, we were able to incorporate their feedback into the plans that we're going to be showing you this evening. We've also coordinated any of the changes that we've been incorporating with the library and the Board of Trustees. So they've been sort of kept in the loop as things have changed on the design. And, um, we've also, in so doing, been in touch with, with Mark Barbadoro as things come up relative to how code may apply to certain situations. So, then, last Friday, we, we met with both Paul and Paula to review in a preliminary way these plans, and we have an updated plan that incorporates the changes that came from that discussion. So hot off the press here, our design team will take us through an updated site plan that incorporates that feedback, and we're interested to gather any further feedback the board may have in advance of our formal filing, which will be on or before October fourth, in anticipation of formal hearing at your October twenty-fourth board meeting. Any general questions before we talk into our, our presentation?
Sounds good, did you forward the site plan you'd like us to open, or I'm not sure whether or not we can?
Uh, we did, I just emailed that to, to both Liz and Chantel, but if you're able to make, I believe Paula McCain or Amy Allen, if you could make them presenters as well, I can hand the baton to them to walk through the update to the update.
I made you the presenter, Matt, so I might make you to...
Okay, alternatively, I could share a screen and we can let the design team narrate, please tell me what I'm sharing.
So it, it looks like we can only have one person be the presenter at a time, so who should go first?
I think I just saw that you made Paula the presenter.
Yes. Does that work? Oh, all right, we could see it.
Yep. Most of the one out there else is on the street.
Hi, I'm Jeff Hoover, Principal in Charge for Tape Architects on the project, and I'm, I'm pleased that you all can make time to meet with us tonight to follow up on the latest developments in the site plan. I, I will sort of immediately turn this over to, to Paula and Amy to walk us through what, what has changed since the last time you might have seen it. But I would say we've found ways to incorporate so much of the, of the feedback. We think the plan is developed in a, in a very positive way, from the parking accommodations to the landscape and, and, and the host of other concerns and issues that have been raised by the various department heads we've met with, including police and fire and DPW. So at this point, we've incorporated that and are eager to share the new layout and entertain your questions about it, but, Paula, if you would sort of begin backwards perhaps, and identify the things, the most recent changes to the plan that some might have seen on just Friday.
Okay, so I can go through the comments from Friday that we have changed. So, starting out, one of the comments that we received that was, as far as we understood, very highly important, was that backing onto Main Street was going to be a big concern, because that's obviously not something you can do at the library space. So we have gone through, Amy has revised the staff parking lot. We've designated this lot as specifically for staff, since we have parallel parking, and we've revised the parking lot to remove the spaces across from the majority of the parallel parking. There's only one parking spot on the east side of the parking lot now, that is the van-accessible parking space, so that the parallel parked cars on the west side of the parking lot have room to turn around. Amy has shown in here, if you can see in the gray diagram, how a car could come to the end of the parking lot and turn around. But as you can see, without cars on the opposite side, it should be easier for them to turn around in the lot without having to back directly onto the street. We've moved the van-accessible parking space down as well, so there is a much lower chance of a van trying to back all the way out of the driveway from halfway down the lot, and it is in fact closer to the gate into the courtyard that has an accessible ramp and grading up to the library entrance at the new connector. Also in this parking lot, we have started looking at an area for potentially relocating the dumpster, but the preferred area right now is going to be in the Boulder Drive parking lot. Uh, we've added the dumpster as well as a screen to the area in front of the generator. This was another item that we had changed since, I believe the entire board had last seen the plan, was that screening had been added around the generator location, so it's not immediately visible. And there is now a loading dock for trucks, the size of which the library typically uses. Um, so we now have dumpster on site and screened next to the snow storage area, as well as the loading dock for the Boulder Drive parking lot. I know that was a lot all at once, but they all kind of ended up going hand in hand as we went through the comments on Friday. Jeff, did you want to address the comments from before then, or would you like me to keep going?
Um, I, I, I think that, um, there've been, there've been a host of, of earlier comments from the board, and I think that maybe we can go through some of them. One of them was that we had not previously shown, uh, snow storage, and so, of course, now that is represented with a dash line in many areas where we anticipate that that can be accommodated. And screening, vegetative buffer screening for the, the generator, but also for the transformer over near the, the Newton Place entrance to the Boulder Drive parking lot. One of the other concerns that has come up was a, as we discussed this with the Building Commissioner, was a setback zones relative to the urban siting and the zero lot line construction possible here. There's a twenty-foot setback from the property line, which is identified as a buffer zone, and which is not perfectly consistent with the zero lot line designation. But in any case, along Main Street, that is going to essentially remain as it is, as a sidewalk adjacent to the building from the curb up to the building face. And as we turn down Newton Place, the same is true, it's, it's essentially the same configuration that, and presentation of the building to the, to the street and, and the public ways, as it has been historically. As we go farther south along Newton Place, the addition is setback farther, so that from the existing curb line on Newton Place to face a building is more than twenty feet, and there is a landscape area along Newton Place. When we get down to Boulder Drive, we haven't created a full twenty-foot landscape buffer all the way along the edge. That's just a very difficult practicality relative to also providing parking there. We have, however, increased the, the, the area of landscape, so that, so the edge to which the cars pull up to is further back from Boulder Drive than it had been previously. So it's more like seventeen feet there, I think, and, and not quite twenty from the curb line on Boulder to the edge where, where the parking begins. It does taper a little bit as it goes farther to the east from, from its widest point, but that's, you know, we're hoping that that, that accommodation there, and also just the incorporation of other landscape areas in these parking areas will be something that the board finds as, as assets to the overall project. Previously, there had been quite a few more parking spaces shown. Some of that parking is now given over to landscape as well, so those are some of the, the changes that we've made. Amy, I'll pass the baton to you, because I'm sure I'm not thinking of something that you, and, and maybe you have something in mind as well.
The only other things that I would add that was brought up was the entrance and general circulation around the Boulder Drive lot. We had discussed this with DPW, because that driveway onto Newton Place is existing, that we're keeping, and it is technically too close to the intersection with Boulder Drive. So, when we were talking about that with DPW, the solution that was proposed was through signage to designate that driveway as exit only, and then through signage along Boulder Drive to encourage cars to enter the parking lot through the Boulder Drive driveway.
So exit only on Newton Place?
Right.
Could you clarify the, the dumpster enclosure, the material?
We haven't discussed the material quite yet, we've focused on finding a location for it, but that is something that we'll absolutely be looking at next, now that we have an area that seems to work with the plan that we have.
Okay, so we look for, I'll just say, we don't, we don't, we, also facing the street, we avoid chain link and also arcade fencing of wood, so we'll be looking at some type of either like vinyl or metal type of enclosure that fits the architecture.
Okay, we can absolutely make that note, and we will look at materials in that thing.
Did you go over the parking on Newton Place, just the drop-off area?
We, we reviewed the, the parking on Newton Place with the police and fire and DPW, and all of them found that an acceptable configuration and didn't voice any, any objections to it.
And that, that, the bump into the sidewalk and take a full, the car width, so there, you know, there won't be no impeding of Newton Place, since it's already narrowed for two-way?
I'm sorry, I didn't quite hear the question.
Sorry, um, the, I'll say the bump in for the, say the drop-off parking area into the sidewalk, and is that a full car width wide, so that it won't impede traffic flow on Newton Place that is offsetted as two-way? Because it's already narrow road?
Right, that, that expands the existing width of Newton Place thematically, I guess, to include a full width car parking spot, yes.
Yeah, so it's a car, the, the auto vehicle won't jet out into Newton, jet out into Newton Place?
That, a lot will depend on the driver, but within the space provided, they should be able to accomplish that, yeah.
They say, yeah, the requisite cur, yeah.
One other item I could add to this that is not shown on this plan, but came from our meeting with DPW and engineering, is they've advised us that they would like us at Main Street and at Newton Place and at Boulder Drive to incorporate RRFB-controlled crossings for all mid-block crosswalks. So that is something that we are planning to add to the project, although it's not something that's shown at this level of, of detail. I just did want to point out that that was something that had been discussed and that is going to be added.
That's a great improvement, and, and also I think you were going to at least delineate like those, the boundaries of the work, because as we've discovered that the sidewalk on Boulder Drive is not included in that
Correct.
scope of work, so that needs to get addressed if that needs any upgrades, and I'm not sure if Nick or Jeff could, if it's on the radar.
Paula, are you talking about the ADA ramp on the opposite side of Boulder Drive?
And, can you scroll up a little bit on the plan? This side, this, this way? Nope, Boulder, Boulder side. Sidewalk, yeah, right there. Yeah, so the limit of work is on the interior or just up to the pavement, and that doesn't include the sidewalk, so, and there's no transitions for ADA on that? With the driveway is? Unless, unless, you know, I was looking at some of the street view, whether or not it was, does that need to be addressed at this point?
Oh, I see, so if it's a driveway apron with the sidewalk going through it, it doesn't necessarily need the detectable warning panels, as long as it's a continuously sloped within the ADA tolerances section of sidewalk panel that's at least thirty-six inches wide?
And we're not, I would just say, so the scope of work doesn't include the sidewalk at all, or the driveway apron, so?
I think...
Condition of that is at the moment?
Yeah, I guess I misinterpreted the plan. I, I assumed that the sidewalks within their limited work line included every, all new sidewalks.
Yeah, but this is outside the limit of work line, apparently, so the work line includes part of Newton Place sidewalk, but it doesn't include Boulder Drive sidewalk side, so it's not gonna address.
No. I, I think that, so the limit of work line does include the Boulder Drive sidewalk. I think what you might be looking at is the property line. I think it is the intent to include the Boulder Drive sidewalk.
Oh, it is, okay, great, because that was a Friday discussion.
Yes.
That is a good point that you raise, Paula, though, the only, the only comment I have in addition is, so if, if there's an ADA crosswalk ramp as shown on the plan here, we just gotta make sure that it matches up with the ADA ramp on the other side of Boulder Drive, that it would be, that would be receiving the, the pedestrian. on the other side of Boulder Drive that it would be, that would be receiving the pedestrian traffic. So just based on the aerial that's superimposed underneath the, the site plan, it looks like the existing crosswalk doesn't quite line up with the ADA ramp that's shown on the plan. That might be an old aerial from prior to the Main and Boulder two-way conversion project, but something to consider. If, if the alignment of that ADA crossing changes, then it will, the limit of work should be adjusted to include the opposite side of Boulder Drive, and that ramp should be adjusted to, to match and align with the one on the library side of Boulder Drive.
Yeah, I'm seeing, so further towards the intersection of Boulder and Newton, I can see like the side, the crosswalk, like it's not, it's not at the corner.
Yeah, the aerial is outdated. What happened was we got a new survey somewhat recently, but Google still has not updated their aerials. So the most recent survey we have does show new crosswalk and curb ramp locations, but the aerial doesn't match.
But you understand what Nick was mentioning about just making sure.
Yes, yeah.
Okay. Double check on that.
Yep.
And that if, and I apologize because like, you know, not driving by and like, Boulder always on the right-hand side, I can't come up yet, you know? Because I haven't trained myself to come up older yet. But so, but whether or not the sidewalk does need improvement there to bring it up to the same, the similar standard. Does the board have any questions on the site plan? I know, you know, for the hearing, they'll have all the, the building elevations and go through more of the project aspects, but at least on the traffic flow and safety landscaping. I think they also have a DPW, I mean, police comments about addition of lighting and some cameras where you have some staff entrances. Right now, so the patrons, patrons would park here towards the rear on Boulder Drive and walk back up Newton Place to enter like the formerly the children's entrance or continue around to the front or continue around to the third side. The, the new side where the guarded entrance is. At least that's my present understanding. There's no rear entrance, rear entrance here. I think there's that ramp, gray ramp that's like the, with the arrows on it near the loading dock, but that is just for some like, like maintenance or I'm not sure what entrance that's for.
Deliveries to the library, books and such, and staff entrances with car key access down below the staff spaces.
The exit from that parking lot, we talked about it being close to the intersection. So it's going to be one-way, it's going to change it to one-way to make it safer. Since it is within 50 feet, they talk with DPW, and so they're all, okay, this is pre-existing, but make it, make it one direction to improve the safety. Anything else you can think of? There was, again, there was an issue with parking on the left side of the, of the building, on the west, because it just wasn't wide enough to accommodate enough parking. So it is just going to be from like some staff parking there as well as handicap accessible drop off. And there'll be signs, also signage there to that effect, so it's not for visitor parking. So everybody would be the parking here or on the street or other surrounding parking lots and entering into the, any of the three entrances, I guess, on the front or the sides of the building.
Correct.
I see that in the updated version of this plan, Amy has shown the auto turn modeling how a, a vehicle would, would turn around. I think that was a concern that was expressed. Just wanted to include in this diagram a demonstration that that maneuver works without being a 15-point turn. I think we all acknowledge that that space is a little bit dimensionally challenged, although the, the van accessible parking space was a, something that Chief Martino actually advised was extremely important. He said you can never have enough van accessible spaces. So that was something that, that he requested we, we incorporate. And I think Paul's initial feedback was that that location was acceptable, as shown. One other thing that I am going to, to mention is that it's a general review. We didn't get any specific points of feedback that for, to review with the, the fire authority having jurisdiction. But we did review this with, with Phil Jordan from the Fire Department, and he advised that our access gives almost all-around apparatus access, which he thought was, was great. And he and Commissioner Erickson both advised us about the need to ensure that vegetation doesn't encroach on any of the, the important clearances that we're showing via dimensions on this plan. And our, our team acknowledges that and are going to select appropriate plantings for, for those locations and make sure that, without undue maintenance burden, that the, the vegetation can, you know, remain unrestricted on the site.
And I think you also, you got okay from the Police Department, correct me if I'm wrong regarding the crosswalk that's going across Newton Place to the other city parking lot.
That's correct. Chief Martino was going to examine that from an accessibility standpoint, just to confirm that the current is, is, is compliant as shown. He had no concerns about the layout of that. Just want to confirm that, you know, the, the grading works in the current configuration. If not, we'll need to adjust it.
Okay. Does any, like, Nick, do you have any further, like, or anybody from any departments have any further comment you'd like to make on the plan or any feedback so that they hopefully could come back in October with everything addressed?
I don't have anything additional. I think they've addressed most everything that me and Ryan from DPW Engineering discussed with them. I've struggled a little bit with the, the curb cut on Newton Place adjacent to the Boulder Drive intersection, whether it should be a, an entrance only, an exit only, or a right in and right out only. And that's basically an attempt to, to avoid confusion at that intersection right there with Newton Place and Boulder Drive. So I, I think a, an entrance only, or a right, right turn in only might be the, the best way to, to manage that, that confusion. But certainly open for discussion with the design team. If they have any traffic engineers on their staff, I'd appreciate maybe some, some input and extra thought on that. Otherwise satisfied with the plan that's been proposed.
Thank you. Olin or Alex, do you have any, any potential like comments or?
I agree with making it no left-hand turns. I think with the way the Boulder's, Boulder Drive is set up on that backend, it definitely give me a track it, traffic issue and a safety issue.
And, you know, I, I agree obviously with what Alex has said, and obviously want to echo what Paula has said. I'm just, I'm very impressed with the, I know this is informal. Very impressed with it. I look forward to seeing the full presentation next month. This is a very exciting, you know, this is a very exciting project, and I'm glad we got this sort of sneak preview again, so thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Library's been overdue for, due for this kind of project for a long time, so I'm very happy to see this progressing.
They're still, they're going to work out some details with building and potential flood mitigation aspects, but outside of this actual, the site plan.
We are, those are, are going to come into play more in the, the phase where we would seek a building permit from the Building Department. Our team is, has already had a, a preemptive meeting to discuss any concerns related to code with Commissioner Barbadoro and are working to address some of his initial concerns with both the, the architecture and civil engineering team. So we're keenly focused on anything we can do to mitigate any potential impact related to that. And I, I think just for, for, as a general note, that relates to the, the status of the FEMA flood maps and sort of them being in limbo between two iterations. And so at, at this stage, you know, a, a newer one is about to apply any minute now, is, is overdue in, in terms of being made official. And so that's sort of a moving target for our team, if you will. So that's what we're working to, to address.
All right.
Thankfully, we've had tons of rain. You can kind of see where those problems might arise.
And that, that does, and just a general question, does that affect your scope of work for the bid for that type of adding, or that type of construction if it has to be updated?
It would, and we're trying to determine the extent to which that applies. So that, that's, that's the exercise that is, is ongoing. It's sort of a, a complex little, little issue that we're trying to, to wrap our heads around it and make sure that, that what we deliver is approvable by Commissioner Barbadoro. One procedural note, I anticipate that I will be the one who is making the, the formal filing in advance of the 24th meeting. I will need to rescind the, the filing that I made in anticipation of the 26th meeting that was rescheduled to, to this one. I don't know if there's any, would I be reaching out to Liz and Chantel to walk me through anything that I may need to do procedurally for that?
Yes, Liz?
They initially did an application, but I didn't, I didn't do it completely because then revisions.
Okay, so you just updated that application?
Yes. If you just update that application packet, we should be okay.
Okay. I'll make, I'll, I'll reach out when, when we get closer to, to making that filing just to confirm that I've, I've dotted my Ts, crossed my Is, and, and made, done everything correctly.
Yes, you could even say it was replaced if you want to just replace it in its entirety, just indicate that so that we won't have to go through the motions of saying something's administratively incomplete, that you've actually, you know, submitted comments. And this is the new, this is the clock-in date for the official package.
Okay. And my understanding is that there is a, there is a filing fee for the special permit that is, is, I think it's the intent that that be waived for a city project.
Yes.
And we have the form of intent letter from Commissioner Barbadoro as, as part of that also.
Great. That's good. And then right in your site plan, if it's like, you know, I mean, any, as you've outlined, any, picking the types of setbacks, like, you know, 20-foot landscaping, that, that you outline what you're seeking for, just a waiver of that. Like, that will be approved as what's on the plan.
Yep. We'll be prepared to address anywhere that that applies.
Okay. Do you have any other questions for us? And there's, the board have any questions, comments or anything? So we think hopefully they'll have a fantastic site plan. It's already much approved, so.
Looking forward to October.
Yeah, looking forward to October.
As are we, and thank you very much for your feedback, Seb.
Thank you. Who should I return the presenter to, by the way?
Calvin Brooks.
Thank you.
Being said, on any other business, we've got, I don't know if we, we have any minutes? No minutes. And communications, type communications. I'll just mention to the board, we've got a pretty heavy agenda, I think, for October coming up. We've got four new projects coming into play. We've got Ivor Johnson starting. We've got, I was going to say, I think a large site for, for a copper drive potentially. Site for warehouse, this is off the top of my head. For that, we've got
Two marijuana.
We've got an extension, potential, extension request modification for Native Sun. I think we're adding medical marijuana cultivation to their adult use permit. I'm seeing all the apical, and also might be seeking an extension, so that's another modification, another hearing. So we start at like 3 o'clock? And then we have, and then of course, I think then we have the submission for South Street, for the building proposal that we go through. We've got all the, the continued items from
Right, this meeting, which are potentially time-consuming.
Yeah, they may be.
Housing on, student housing on Flat Rock Road, intent for Applewild also on October. So let's see, we'll, we'll take a look and see how like optimized a bit. And hopefully, as soon as applicants can get in some materials, I'll just mention that out there, applicants, that the easier it's going to be, so we can be able to go through the, the materials to, the, ahead of time.
Yes.
Yes, and also sooner, and Dr. Center of the Boulder, as well as being able to, the department, be able to vary departments to see through any, comment on any changes is important also for some of these projects, too, so that we can get through them.
I will do the best I can to get all up. I got Ivor Johnson ready to go, so I'll do that one. I'll do it all best, I'll do it all situated. And then I, to be in the data.
And this month, the, the meeting was a week early because of voting, so.
So you're right, if I can get them to even get their submissions in on the deadline, like even a week before that, it would help me a lot.
Outreach in the beginning of the span.
I will see if they will.
Great. That being said, I don't have anything else. Anybody have anything else? What's that? Well, motion to adjourn? And second, and there's a second. All those in favor, say hi. Hi.
Hi.
Host, oh, look at that, 8:35, and we started half an hour later.
I was going to say, enjoy it, because next month it won't be like this.
Not like this at all, no.
Well, all right, well, good night, everybody.
Have a great one, everybody.